Good evening and welcome to the Cleveland Heights University Heights Board of Education Work Session for Tuesday, the 15th of February 2022. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll please?
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Serini.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
May I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss collective bargaining.
I motion that we move into executive session for the topic of collective bargaining.
I second.
Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're back from our executive session. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion to consider the consent agenda, please?
So motion.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions or discussion about the consent agenda? Nope. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the role, please?
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serenian.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes. And now Ms. Kirby.
Okay, I believe my first topic is strategic plan update. I am going to share my screen and walk through this first component. So this evening, we do have two work session presentations. This first one is going to be brief because I want to make sure we have time to get into the meat of the second presentation. Tonight, I'm going to present updates on where we are with our action steps that are aligned to our 2026 strategic plan. So every department aligned to their goal has been working on specific actions plans for this year. So I'm going to share the progress of that work. Just as a reminder, for our 2026 plan, we do have five ambitious goals that we are aiming to achieve. One is 100% of our third graders by the end of third grade are reading at their identified grade level. Performance on state assessments at the level of 80%. Core success in algebra for 90% of our ninth graders. A 95% graduation rate before years. And 90% of our students having a viable career pathway or a clear plan to attend a college or university of their choice. So first, I'm going to start with goal one. And just to revisit, goal one is connected to student outcomes. Goal two is connected to educational approach, so the pathways we put in place for students to be successful. Goal three is connects to our work with families and community. Goal four aligns to work with our valued professionals and creating and sustaining the culture of excellence. And goal five deals with our operational resources. So one thing that I'll say before I begin is we have certainly been in another unorthodox year as relates to the challenges of COVID, you know, year two. And yet, we have been able to make some progress in some of these key action steps. So you'll see in the left column, the specific step, middle column, progress. If there are any specific areas of note that I wanted to call out, that's listed there too. So goal one deals with our student outcomes. And our action steps this year to get there include using our core materials to provide high-quality instruction. Working on developing common grading practices. Ensuring our parents have the tools they need in order to support their students in being successful. Looking at our support for our students at our transition grades in particular. We know this year that was definitely a challenge because we had had some students who hadn't been in school for a while. Ensuring fidelity to a multi-tiered systems of support structure, which is designed to ensure we have a strong academic foundation and intervention system for our students. Developing a five-year CTE strategic plan. Leading the building level action plan process district-wide. Adjusting our assessments to better align with our student needs. Implementing OTEZ 2.0, which is the teacher evaluation system. And using data from the National Clearinghouse to track our performance and to enforce your college enrollment. And so you'll see there's some areas that we have marked as complete. We continue to use our board adopted materials, but I want to note we are in, we are going into an ELA adoption cycle this spring. The BLAT process has been in deep implementation across our buildings. And second round learning walks have been occurring to support this process. And we did receive our National Clearinghouse data, and these that is a part of our metrics to map for our college work. We have quite a few ongoing or in-progress action steps as well. So for example, we are reconvening our grading task force. We have some pilot grading work happening in our schools this year. And the task force is going to work on some consistencies and guidance. We're excited to kick off our, our multi-tiered systems of support structure work. So we are working on a comprehensive plan led by the Ed Services, Student Services Department. As it relates to CTE, as you know, we've been talking about, we do have focus groups happening across all five consortium schools. We're excited about some upcoming meetings that will be happening this spring to continue this work, to tease it out, to bring those communities together to plan around our CTE work. So this is just a sampling in terms of some of the areas of note, but we are making, you know, solid progress in terms of our action steps for goal one. When we move to goal two, again, this is around educational pathways and opportunities for students to have support so that they can be successful. So we're doing some very significant work around our co-teaching models in our classrooms to support our students with disabilities. PBIS implementation is strong and in process in our schools. Our discipline task force continues to meet monthly to look at trends and track progress. We do have upcoming equity training this spring for our staff. The work around our leadership, building leadership teams is complete and also ongoing. So we've had that retreat, we've had our DLT meetings, we have the BLAT process in place, all that work led by Assistant Superintendent Gould. We have not started our work on portrait of a graduate, and I am excited about returning to that, likely to start to think about that planning late spring and the summer. Because I think that will really help strengthen our strategic plan when we're able to really put a stake in what we want, what we envision for our Cleveland Heights High School graduates. So that'll be really important for us. Training on technology is ongoing. Explicit instruction is our core professional development tier-one instructional, instructional strategies training. And we have convened an early learning task force, so that is complete as well. Around goal three, again, quite a bit of work. So we have embedded the work of family engagement in the work that's happening in the building leadership teams. And also the work that's embedded in their building level action plans. We're very excited about the Community Learning Center at Noble. It is off to a great and tremendous start. And we are also pursuing funding opportunities to continue to expand the model. Great feedback from the community. We have some plans in the works for additional programming for students, which is a part of that model, very excited about that. Attendance is a component of the building level action plan of the schools and also part of our partnership work with parents. So we continue to look at and work on that. And we'll be talking about attendance tonight, so you'll see where we are with that. We also continue to identify additional community partnerships for, for our students. Those will be living in terms of, from a process perspective, in the post-secondary planning system. We train and retrain our social workers on PPS. We're looking at a really good survey data system so that we can get real-time measures that matter from our students, from our parents, from our staff around key metrics. The information around college and career, you know, we, the high school does a really nice job, and our communications person does a nice job of helping to get that information out. We're very excited about our March work session where we will be presenting the communications audit for the National School of Populations Association. Very comprehensive process, excited to share that information. Connected to that, we continue to work on a communications plan and re-engage Pendernet. There was a meeting recently around Pendernet to see where we are with the representatives. And we've been looking at expanding our communications calendar. We have one in place, so we're tweaking that. We actually had great success around retention. So if you all remember last summer, we partnered with KCA-K-12 to do some intentional calling and contact with families about their intent to return. We also worked in partnership with the union who also did a door-knocking campaign to speak to families in the community about, you know, attending and maintaining attendance in our schools. And so we're excited that we actually were able to see an uptick in attendance this year compared to last year. Our work around amplifying student voice is ongoing. So not only do we have My Cadre, but the high school has started other student voice and mentorship groups for students as well. And we've launched the Equity webpage. In terms of goal four, here's where we have the work around Grow Your Own. So we have taken an opportunity to get feedback from participants about their experience, to inform that and to improve it. We're in the process of putting a website and a newsletter together to, again, share and magnify information about the Grow Your Own program. That includes developing the promotional materials. And that also includes networking with employee resource programs to help us really develop a clear strategy for attracting more educators of color. We have, both Dr. Lombardo and Carla Morris have been in an intensive training program through Cornell Institute around diversity. They've used that to inform the work that they're doing around hiring and training in particular. And it's been a nice blend of their work and training with the Equity Task Force. And that includes making some adjustments to our hiring tools and techniques. And then finally, we are engaged in a continuous review of our safety procedures. We did complete vulnerability assessments at our middle schools and high schools. They're coming up in our elementary schools this spring. And our district Safe Schools Advisory Committee has continued to meet just about each month. And so by the end of there, that committee will have a tool to use district-wide to support and reinforce our safety and positive climate procedures. And then, as it relates to goal five, we have also made quite a bit of progress here. So we have been discussing district facilities with the staff to make sure that our five-year plan is accurate. We continue to meet with the Lake Facilities Committee to share and get input on current projects. We have completed our interviewing of architects and consultants to support different projects. And also have completed the award process, project process for this fall. Some of the work that continues to, that is, that remains in progress includes ensuring those documents are reviewed and not forbid. The master facilities plan work, looking at that through a lens of equity. So we're, you know, making some updates to that. Transitioning to our work orders to a new system so that we can better make sure we quickly address issues in our buildings. And, and so that work is kind of ongoing as well. As it relates to some of the operational finance, finance pieces, the work around cybersecurity continues. So we continue to look at those resources, look at our plans, and continue to refine. It's not complete, we're still working on that. We also have been looking at our infrastructure material, looking at the life cycle to make sure that we are operationally, operationally in the place that we need to be from that perspective. You've seen recently our financial reports, so those pieces are complete. We also have a plan to monitor the impact of our ESTR funds and make sure that we are getting those resources to where our data show that is needed. And our work around advocacy is never, ever ending. And continues in terms of making sure that we're informed, we're reaching out to a different stakeholders and partners in this work to, and, you know, you know, with even more specificity for us to work around, you know, the lawsuits that we are currently partnering. So our next steps as it relates to our strategic plan, one is to refine our data dashboard. one is to refine our data dashboard. We do have a dashboard, but we have to get that site to live live so people can access that. Full disclosure, that's a project that I haven't been able to execute on this past fall just because we had some other things that took precedence over that. We will, at our State of Our Schools meeting in March, be sharing our strategic plan materials. So we'll have print materials, we'll have a full plan, promotional materials as well available for the public. And then, my dream was to do this in October, but this would be now spring. We are planning a roadshow so that we can go out to different community events, large and small, to talk about our strategic plan so people in the community are aware of our plans and where we are. So I know that was a quick update, but I did want to make sure that all board members in our community know that we have continued to do this work this year as relates to driving the work three-year-one. Are there any questions before we move to the second part of the presentation?
Not a question, just a comment. And that is that part of the strategic plan roadshow, I think that would be a really great thing to cover if we have another joint meeting with the cities and the library.
Yes.
So not sure if one of those is scheduled yet or if there's any dates in the works, but that would be the key topic that I think we should cover.
And sort of dovetailing off of that, I would really like to get those on the calendar as soon as possible. I think one of the reasons that it's becoming a little bit more time-sensitive is summer activities, et cetera, coordinating around those, seeing how we can work together in a manner that makes, that brings more opportunities to our kids. So if we can get that on the schedule, I think that would be a great thing.
So if there aren't any other questions, I am going to actually stop sharing and turn it over to the Ed Services team.
And Liz, thank you for that update. It was good to see that.
I hope I didn't just come out of the meeting. Hold on. Could I come out? All right. Okay. So I'll tee up the Ed Services team. So what I shared were the updates on action steps. Tonight, we're going to take a look at two key data points that we are paying attention to as it relates to the work. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Gould and her team. You're on mute.
Good evening, Superintendent Kirby. Good evening, board members. We are here this evening to give a semester-one academic update. Presenting with me this evening will be myself, Allison Byrd, our Director of Data Research and Assessment, and Mr. Robert Swager, Director of Court of Women Instruction. Tonight, we will talk about all five goal areas. Even though our semester update really focuses in on Goal One and Two, you will hear how the monitoring and the next steps impact not only just student outcomes and educational approach, but also how we interact with our families, what training will happen with our valued professionals, as well as the resources that are needed in order to move our plan forward. The goals for the presentation this evening, hard to look at the strategic plan goals and talk about the yearly performance that we have looked to monitor in year-one of the implementation of the strategic plan. The key performance indicators, as Ms. Kirby has shared, that we will discuss this evening are attendance year-to-date, chronic absenteeism, and NWEA MAP winter achievement and fall-to-winter growth in both math and literacy. NWEA, we have been practicing. We'll talk about what that looks like in practice in our school buildings, and we'll talk about some trends, challenges, monitoring, and next steps. Before we begin, we want to just talk a little bit about the work that happens prior to any building, completing a building-level action plan. Before that happens, a needs assessment is conducted and a root cause analysis. Not only is this done with buildings, but also at the district level. In order to do the district-level planning, buildings must first complete their root cause analysis and needs assessment to find the critical areas of focus for their particular buildings. This year, for the district, completing our needs assessment, our critical need areas are attendance, content areas with a focus on literacy and mathematics, and special populations. And when we speak of special populations, we are speaking of students with disabilities, gifted, EL, those areas. So these are our four content, critical area needs. This helps to focus our work and is aligned to our strategic plan goals. So here you will see the critical needs area, the strategic goal area where it aligns, along with the objectives that we will be speaking on tonight of ninety-five percent of our students graduating in four years, and also the increase in attendance of all students pre-K through 12. So beginning with the attendance rates year-to-date, Ms. Allison Byrd will share with us attendance year-to-date, and we will look at attendance daily as well as our chronic absenteeism. And I will turn it over to Allison.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just doing a check, how's my volume? Too much going, keep moving. All right, first up, we have, one of the data points that we're monitoring is our attendance rate. And in simplest form, we're thinking about, it's a ratio that compares the number of students who are in attendance compared to the number of students who are enrolled and should physically be in our buildings participating in our instruction. You can see the attendance rate for the district over time. The current year, twenty-one, twenty-two, is not reported because all of these other measures represent the attendance rate at the end of the year. So once the year concludes, then we will update this. What we have for you in the following slides, though, is a chance for you to take a look at the attendance rate every three weeks for the beginning of the school years for the current year, twenty-twenty-one, and for nineteen-twenty. Want to keep in mind that school year twenty-eighteen, nineteen has been a regular or traditional or typical year for us. Twenty-nineteen, twenty was when we experienced the onset of COVID. We did have the COVID school closures, which began in March, March sixteenth. So it does not affect the following data that you're going to see because this presentation is about summer school. However, for school year twenty-twenty-one, we were fully involved in COVID. We actually started the school year off in a full remote setting, and then throughout the year, started bringing students in by way of a hybrid learning model, and then closing out with a whole in-person model. So here we have, again, the district attendance rate. We're looking at it year-to-date, which means from the beginning of the school year to each of the dates identified. There is a link in the presentation that shows all of the specific date ranges for each one of those weeks. So, for example, I, geez, why I do that? So taking a look at the graphic, the light gray bar represents the nineteen-twenty school year. The darker gray bar represents, okay? The darker gray bar represents the twenty-twenty-one school year, and the gold bar represents the current twenty-one, twenty-two. If you're trying to get a sense of how we want the graphic to look, we want this to look like a stair step up, right? We want the rates to increase. We have high attendance or high participation as the year progresses. The next data point that we monitor is chronic absenteeism. And that actually looks at the percentage of students who are missing ten percent or more of their scheduled school time. Now, this includes both unexcused and excused absences. So excused absences would be those medical appointments, personal illness, even students not being permitted to participate in school due to quarantine because exposure to someone who has COVID. And you can see on this particular slide, at the end of the year, what the district's chronic absenteeism rates have been. Again, recognizing that for the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year, where the absenteeism rate was sixteen point six percent, it is important to note that during the COVID closure, students were marked as present, and that does have a positive impact on the absenteeism rates. Right, these two graphics just give us an idea of why chronic absenteeism is important, why it's important to monitor it and reduce it. Because it includes both excused and unexcused absence, chronic absenteeism can often be overlooked or dismissed. However, researchers have found that the absence type, so it doesn't matter if a student is missing school for a medical appointment or for a hair appointment or because they are not going to class, the reason doesn't change the long-term impact that missing school has on students. Missing too many days can lead to struggling to read proficiently by the end of third grade. And it's also an indicator of future dropouts. And chronic absenteeism can be an early warning sign of academic trouble as early as kindergarten. And that's what the graphic on the right-hand side lots us through. This is based on a study, fortunately, it was in California, not in Ohio. But the gist of it is, when students miss more time, again, it can impact their ability to learn, to read, and thus impact their learning in future years. So now we're taking a look at the chronic absenteeism rates from the district perspective. So again, we're looking at three school years. The light yellow is nineteen-twenty. And again, this will be before the impact of COVID. The darker yellow represents school year twenty-twenty-one, which we are living through with and continuing with the current year, which is the dark gray bar representing the school year twenty-two, with students being fully in person. Again, thinking about what we want this to look like, we want this graphic to be the stair step going down. Like we see in week three, we have a decrease in the percentage of students who are chronically absent. However, my colleagues will speak to this a little bit more. Due to, just, you'd say, regular or expected absences, we've seen a significant uptick from students being ill, whether it's from the COVID doctors or not, and then also from students having to quarantine due to exposure. We wanted to take a deeper dive into the current school year. So this graphic is looking at chronic absenteeism rates for the current year, so twenty-one, twenty-two, by grade level. So each week, and the weeks are listed down on the graphic, is its own bar. And then the values that you see, like, for example, the seventeen percent and thirty-four percent for kindergarten, that represents the percentage of students who are chronically absent in week three. And then the second value represents the percentage of students chronically absent in week eighteen. You may be curious or noticing that coming out of week fifteen would be just after Thanksgiving break. And then week eighteen would be the return to school from winter recess. So those would definitely be high points.
So some of the trends that are seen in the mid-year data, our daily attendance has shown a small decline in year-to-date. This is where Ms. Byrd referred to, we want to see the attendance as we walk up the steps. With chronic absenteeism, there has been an increase over the course of the first semester. And definitely, there is an increase in our CTE courses in the first semester as well. Grades two, eight, and the cohort of twenty-two have the highest rates per grade band. Some of the challenges that we faced for attendance. COVID has impacted our student and staff attendance, and we are very much aware of that. Data views were needed to track attendance and align to our strategic planning. So there has been some revision to some of our data views to ensure that we are providing support where it is needed for our buildings. Quarantine at home is the fifth-highest code for excused absences this year, impacting over sixteen hundred students. Yes, Mr. Hines?
Just for my own clarification, chronic absence is somebody who's out, please correct me if I'm wrong, for eighteen absences total. Is that correct?
No, the correct calculation for it is ten percent of their scheduled time. So if you take just the first ten days of school, if a student misses one of those first ten days, they would be considered chronic absentee. As the year progresses and that student remains in school, the value of ten percent will change, right? So it's one day and the next two days. A typical school year for our students is a hundred and seventy-one, seventy-two days. So a student who is actually absent for the entire year, they have seventeen-one more absences.
Thank you. That, thank you very much.
An education protocol was needed for our quarantined students because this was also impacting our attendance as well. So if we were looking at students being quarantined, if there was a classroom that needed to be closed, or there was a school closure, there was an education protocol needed regarding attendance. And the establishment of TBA, or Tygra Virtual Academy, with the school needing to have its own IRN number, and the extension of the semester-two registration window also impacted our attendance as well. So some of the actions that we are taking to ensure that we continue to focus and monitor our attendance is approving the communication with parents. There was a focus in our year-one goal setting that we would increase the usage of Infinite Campus with our parents, and that has happened. Continue to implement and monitor what we call our student assistant teams. These are teams that are made up of teachers, counselors, social workers, psychologists, the principal, where they are constantly looking and monitoring interventions as well as attendance for students. Continue to share weekly data and attendance trends. This happens weekly with our principals. They have access to the daily and chronic absenteeism for their schools, for their grade levels, as well as their buildings. Allison and I partake in bimonthly attendance meetings with principals to go over the data and talk about exactly what they have implemented within their schools and to provide them with support. As well as the data research and evaluation team meets with our attendance secretaries, our social workers quarterly to talk about attendance and how to support staff. We monitor the impact of addressing attendance. We have looked at adding an additional social worker for the high school and for TBA. We have added success coaches at both the middle school and the high school to help with supporting those students in need of extra support and having that one-on-one interaction with goal-setting for them. We have implemented, we have added nurses, as well as we have extended the attendance secretary's hour. as well as we have extended the attendance secretary's hours in order for them to be in the schools to also make sure that they are capturing all of that information. And we are definitely making sure that we have trusted adults in our schools where kids build that relationship in the schools and want to attend more. For the education protocol, this was established mid-fall for reporting attendance for quarantined students because we didn't want the quarantine to impact our attendance. So, there was an education protocol put in place where students who were quarantined were able to access their education through Google Classroom and also check in with someone in the school during a particular hour to watch over their attendance and see if there were any needs. We will continue to review and revise our attendance codes and procedures as things happen from the state as well as within the district. Data views will be created and revised, and Ms. Kirby spoke to that in her information earlier. And we will definitely continue to use research-based practices to improve attendance. And one of those practices is to make sure about how we communicate with families. Next, we will have our NWEA math overview. And we just want to make sure that we have at the forefront of how this aligns to our strategic plan. We are looking at 95% of the students graduating in four years. But under that, the objective is for the results to be used in the classroom to guide instruction so that we increase student performance on any assessment that is given.
All right. So, a few things to keep in mind as we move past the NWEA for the NWEA math. Math is a daily test. There are slides for each month's grade levels, of the new school, middle school, and high school. We'll be looking at both the one on the reading test and then on the mathematics. To help with the calculation of the contest and to reduce the preparedness, if looking at the median percentile of the achievement group, we're going to get that by grade level. It's just a simple, we're looking at the median percentile. It is the value in the middle of a group of down, a record, which is the highest. Math is a one-referenced test, which means you are able to compare all the components to other students in the standard, other students who are finishing the test. And the 50th percentile of the performance is typically for the ones who went next to the achievement or difficult. Over on the right-hand side of the slide, again, because the numbers can be, we use these descriptors in order to describe the performance. So, again, in that grade level that they have the median percentile of 50 is in the average of typical grade level. Eighty, eighty percent happens in the middle to come by, and fifty-seven to five would be considered a valid. So, again, in all representation, you will see those in ways to, to all this, other students. In addition to looking at the median percentile of the grade level, we'll also be looking at it by our student groups. So, least and then last, we will be improving. And then we'll also look at the performance of disability status. So, we'll make sure to use SWD yes, which means students with disability yes, and SWD no. I'll give you a little bit more background information on math and why we use it. Here's a universal screener. Tonight, we're going to be looking at performance around the mathematics. But we do also have a science test that's available to us and choose what students get graded for early grades. The mathematics and reading test are administered to students that are in grade three of high school. There are a variety of question types, maybe myself, but that may be a day, it's just a lot to choose. But now we see a range of test questions that limit what we see in our higher states. The tests are untitled, and it typically takes students between forty-five minutes to an hour to complete it. We did see students who participated in the remote setting. It does sometimes take them a little bit longer to accomplish the task. But if it's technically a certification, getting that remote set. And then there are a variety of different, different, different. So, one of the, some of the reasons why we use math, these are some of the most important ones. First is that math is adaptive, and you would need students where they are. So, it's not a static test where the questions are always set, you respond. And maybe questions are ready, the test is difficult, and they state the questions. They're really difficult to communicate. The score is a medium. So, we have other tests that we need to determine off the score. And it takes double weeks to be able to result that. Considered a challenge to realize that results are important to construction employees. All of the content areas are aligned to Ohio's state work standard, which allows the test to predict performance on the higher state test and can show that what you're seeing here is that you're allowed to be great with the application in the young age teaching schedule, which is very much. We use it because it measures current achievement in growth over time to allow students to improve. And then there are some utilities, which is the, for our app program, the National Council Board for College School Tool, which allows students to input their score and give the impression that they will do them for the college media, which helps universities with that, to measure their performance. And then finally, it serves multiple purposes. So, again, we use that as an alternative assessment for the third grade, reading year two. It's also used as a gift-based screener, so it provides all right of the screen for digital, and then for math materials, and then for science. And then the results are also used to create individualized planning plans and door screens for the models, and to protect those descriptive explanations for the next steps and those long reasons. So now, let's take a look at performance, beginning with our elementary schools, area of reading. So, the structure of this slide is pretty simple. So, again, you can see that, look at the gray three. This is achievement and growth on the math reading test. Again, we use median percentile. So, the values that you see there are the percentages. It includes results for three school years, 1920, 2021, and the current year, which is in white orange, 2122. The fall tests are the lighter colors. And the winter testing is part of the different colors. On the left-hand side, you will see fall and winter achievement percentile. So, I'm reading this, and you'll see the winter only situation of the math test for the 2122 school year, which is in the orange bar. Median achievement percentile is forty-eight. And so, we can describe that as students within the average range, where we're not on the range of that historical, twenty-two, twenty-five, and this. Although on the right-hand side here, we're looking at growth, including the fall and winter situation of the same year. So, again, we could look at the orange bar, that represents the growth percentile for median percentile for students in grade three, which is the fifty-ninth percentile, which is what, in the back, which is sort of an uptick of what we saw with last year's COVID pandemic rankings. Yes, Ms. Hines?
This huge, this huge jump from a growth of thirty-six to a growth of fifty-nine looks to me like proof that learning in person is more effective than learning remotely. Am I making too much of a, of that change?
Well, I'll say yes. Let's take a look at the other grade levels. And if you visit that question, you can see what we're getting at. I pause because I'm going to say yes, actually, just as a teacher. That is what we're stating.
Okay, I mean, that's my first, my first gut reaction was, oh, look, the year that we got them back in the building, right?
And the other thing I think we should, we should consider, and I was certainly going to point out, is that it does impact those students in different ways. So, again, we may not see, or, we'll just take a look at the other.
Okay, thank you.
Grade four, so again, the same thing. You see the achievement percentile for the greatest, she writes in the average range. And the same for the third. Grade five achievement, oh, they were so close. So, based on the scale that we have, that forty-two or median percentile of the two of the achievement side is like the low average. And then the growth of the winter situation to, to, fall situation to the winter situation this year, we are, the students are falling in the average range. Again, up from slightly below with the previous cohort. Now, this is looking at priority group achievement. So, again, still looking at the elementary students in the area of reading. We have the median percentiles for student groups by their race and ethnicity, and then also by disability status. Ms. Lewis, did you have your hand, another question, or is that still from the other?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not lower my hand.
No, it's not. So, here, we're looking at the priority group achievement. Again, similar to the other slides, we see all three years. The blue represent nineteen-twenty and twenty-twenty-one school year, and the orange represents the current school year. And we see a range of performance of our student groups. We see the achievement percentiles of students of color has varied from slightly below to slightly above average relative to the national norm. And then while the achievement percentiles for white students has remained substantially above the norm over time. We're looking at our students with disabilities, again, that's the SWD yes. Their performance has hovered in the substantially below achievement level over time. Same group, but this time we're talking about growth. And we can see across the student groups, the growth that students are experiencing between the fall and winter administration for this school year is in the about average. Now, for our middle schools, still in the area of reading. We can see for the current cohort of sixth graders, the achievement, median achievement percentile is slightly below average, and their growth is about average. Similar to the sixth grade, with seventh grade, we see the achievement is slightly below average, and the growth is slightly over average. And then for eighth grade, still in reading, the achievement performance is in the about average range, while the growth percentile is also about average. Looking at priority student groups, we can see a range of performance from slightly below the norm to moderately above for our students with disabilities. Just like at the elementary level, we do see them staying in that substantially low range. And then compared to their non-identified peers, we also fall right in that about average range. For growth, we can see that for all but the student group of Asian students, the median growth was in the average range. But for the Asian students, it was slightly above typical performance at sixty, in the sixty-third percentile. And now, the last few charts for reading would be for the high school. So, at the high school level, students in grade nine and grade ten take the reading test. Because there are projections for our state tests, including English one, and English two, which from, for the 2023 cohort and younger is the test that they need to be successful in wanting proficient on as part of their graduation requirements. So, looking at grade nine, their achievement in reading for this school year falls in the about average range. And same for their growth percentiles. They've remained pretty consistent over the last few years. Again, in a model, thinking to your, your point there, it seems to impact students in different ways. And then here, same thing, we're seeing with grade ten, both achievement and growth are in that about average range. When looking at priority groups, again, race and ethnicities, we see we have the range from substantially below average all the way to moderately above average. This graphic looks at, again, the growth from within the current year, fall to, winter within the same year, fall to winter. And here, we have all but one group, which is our Latinx population, is in the about average range. So, moving on to mathematics. Again, the slides for mathematics mirror those for reading. We have the achievement on the left-hand side, growth for the grade level on the right-hand side. And this is all based on the median percentile for each one of the student groups identified. So, what we see with the current year, so that's in the orange, the median percentile for third grade, third graders in mathematics is a twenty-seventh percentile, which places them moderate below typical performance. And however, their growth is slightly above typical performance. So, again, we are making gains within the year, just above a lot that we're working to make up. For grade four, we see the achievement percentile is moderately below typical performance. And the same for the growth, following the thirty-seventh percentile, which is slightly below average. For grade five, grade five students, their median achievement percentile is the twenty-fifth percentile, which places them in the moderately below range, while their growth is about average. And then priority groups. We can see that regardless of the student group, the growth is in the, oh, excuse me. My eyes skipped. I'm, actually, this is the achievement slide. So, we see, again, that same range for achievement with these student groups ranging from substantially below to moderately, actually substantially above for our white students. And then now, we're looking at the growth, but the growth for each one of those student groups is about average or typical. For middle school, so middle school and the high school mathematics is slightly different. At the middle school level, we do offer Algebra One and Geometry to students. And they typically start taking those courses as seventh graders. So, there is a different test for students in those high school credit courses. So, the first slides I'm going to show you represent students in grades six, seven, and eight taking the grade level test. And then you will see slides specific to students participating in Algebra One and Geometry. And then you will see slides specific to students participating in Algebra One and Geometry at the middle school. So again, sixth grade here, we can see for the current year, we do have a drop in the median percentile for achievement. It is in the twenty-first percentile, so we describe that as substantially below performance or below typical performance. And their growth is slightly below typical or expected performance. Seventh grade, we also see the achievement percentile is in the moderately below range, while the growth is about average. For grade eight, again, these are the students participating in the grade level mathematics courses. The achievement percentile falls in the moderately below average range and growth is in the average. Looking at achievement across priority groups. Similar to what we saw in reading, you see a range of performance from substantially below typical performance or below the average through average performance or average growth. And then finally, looking at growth for students at the middle level, we can see their growth percentiles from fall to winter is in the about average. We would describe it as about average, with the exception of the students in the multiracial group, following the thirty-seven percentile, we have been slightly below typical performance. Now, so this is the slide, actually, we combine seventh grade and eighth grade Algebra One and Geometry on the same slide. So we only have achievement percentiles because the Algebra One test aligned to the twenty seventeen standards is a newer MAP test. They don't have the growth norms established yet, but we do have them for achievement. So for seventh graders taking Algebra One, we would describe their performance as slightly above average or typical performance. For eighth graders in Algebra One, they would be right about average performance. And then for our eighth graders participating in geometry, we describe that as slightly above. And looking at priority groups, we do not have any students with disabilities that are participating in those courses. I apologize, that's not an accurate statement. We do have some, however, it is the the number of students is such that to share their information, it could be identified. So there are fewer than ten there, and it makes the statistical summary less valid. So I have not really figured that out. There's an error to say that we don't have any, that's not clear. But looking at the priority group or student group performance in Algebra One and Geometry, so we have black and African students and white students. We can see that the achievement percentiles are slightly above average. And are all slightly above average, with the exception of our black students in Algebra One, which are just in the average range. All right, high school. So the same thing at the high school, we have students participating in Algebra One, who take the Algebra One test, we can see their achievement over time. We can see following the fourteenth percentile is their winter achievement for this school year, which we would describe as substantially below performance or below typical performance. Looking at that ninth grade performance by student group. And we see that range where we would describe it as substantially below to moderately below average or typical performance. This slide looks at performance on the geometry test. So we have students in both ninth grade and tenth grade who take geometry. The group of ninth graders are traditionally, we would describe them as being on an accelerated path because they have earned Algebra One credit at the middle level. And then our tenth graders would be, you know, that more traditional path, they would, we would expect them to have taken Algebra One as ninth graders and then geometry as tenth graders. But for both groups, we see that the achievement is, we would describe it as being below average for our ninth graders and then substantially below for our tenth graders. And looking at this same information by priority group. Again, we have that range where we see students with disabilities and they're substantially below. Although all black students, multiracial students, and white students, their performance ranges also from substantially below to slightly below the typical performance. And then again, there aren't growth values for that because it's a newer test, and we do not have those norms yet from N W E A.
So Ms. Burt has shared a lot of information in regards to N W E A MAP. I would like to talk a little bit about how our buildings use this information and what it looks like in practice for them. Staffs work together in teams to really review this data and help to identify the strengths, the needs of their students and talk about what those goals are for improvement. So students are aware of their MAP, where they stand, what their goal, and they set goals for themselves so that they can also monitor their improvement. Staff are also using these to inform their interventions, their enrichments, and things that they need to do with students during the school day. They are working individually to set goals as well as monitor that progress. This is also shared with families as well. The data is also used to develop small groups within the classroom and how you address specific needs. I know many of the board members have been on on the learning walks or walkthroughs in buildings, and you're seeing students in those small groups. And so those are sometimes developed by using the N W E A MAP data. Data from the unit assessments along with MAP, because you don't want to use MAP just in isolation. You want to use it with some of your formative assessments and some of your summative assessments. So it helps teachers to be able to revise the instruction so that it meets the needs of the students in their classrooms. High school staff use data to monitor not just student progress, but it also assists with scheduling. It can assist in evaluations that are needed for students, as well as help them to prepare for those graduation requirements. MAP results are then also shared with families. Information is shared with family during conferences. Some students share their information with families so that there is a partnership with families, understanding exactly what the goals are for students in the classroom. Some of the takeaways from the data that has been shared, we continue to see the achievement gaps are persisting in our semester data. The literacy achievement in some grade, there are some losses, but the overall average has remained over two years of the pandemic. And we are seeing decline over the last two years in all of our demographics in the area of mathematics. Some of the challenges that we have faced in regards to this, and I should say, the ed services team has provided some coverage, but specifically, our literacy and mathematics specialists have been needed to provide some coverage when we have had the absences of our staff. We have had acute academic, definitely rise in the needs for social emotional needs due to post-COVID. And a large number of our staffs, due to the absence of COVID, this has truly negatively impacted what we call tier one instruction, but this is the universal instruction where all of our students are being exposed to all of our materials. And definitely, this has put our teachers behind in what those expected learning outcomes are for students.
So as we continue to look at our data, we know that we want to be proactive and we want to think about next steps. As we've looked at the attendance components, we know that there is need for us to implement some of the best practices that are in the research related to improving district-wide attendance. We know that the research even presented on the previous slides will help us identify action steps as early as elementary school and really trying to communicate that with parents and students. Mainly even just to address the misconceptions that might be out there about how important it is to be at school and to not have more than two absences per month and how that impacts achievement so greatly. We also know that we want to continue to use not only our MAP assessment data, but also our formative and our summative assessments to help inform instruction. We have in place the Ohio Improvement Process. We use the TBT structure where teachers get a chance to meet and talk about data, think about instructional strategies, and then modify instruction. So we are constantly in that cycle of assess, plan, teach, and then revise. We want to deliver our professional development through building professional development days. We actually just recently had January thirty-first Day Today, where I'm building teams of teachers with their principal, got a chance to look at the MAP data in depth, also look at their building level action plan, and then think about what do we do next. So there were a lot of action plans that were created as a result of the January thirty-first Day Today. And we are excited to continue to work with teams and support their efforts, whether it's in tier one instruction or whether it's through interventions. We know that it's important to communicate with families about student learning and assessments. The reports that are available to students and parents through the MAP system are really helpful in identifying those growth targets and letting students know where they are in terms of a median score and what their growth looks like. So we want to continue to find ways to inform parents about that. We do know that we are in the process of adopting new ELA curriculum that will continue to help us address any gaps that there might be within our instructional program. We do refer to that as our tier one program, and we want to make sure that it is reaching high-quality instructional practices and content through that curriculum that we choose as a district. One of the implementation pieces that we are excited about that's happening right now is our Spring Board Collaborative. And what that attempts to do is to provide intervention and enrichment for students in grades K through three that allows parents to also be part of the solution by learning how to become a literacy coach at home. We are in week two of a seven-week after-school program for our elementary students. And we are excited about some of the preliminary participation and engagement numbers that we're seeing to help increase that literacy achievement. And we also know that math continues to be an area where our students need more support, more practice. Even some of it is just building confidence with students practicing math and feeling confident in using language of math. So we know there are an opportunity for us to provide math interventions. Some of them are already included within our existing resource. Our math instructional specialist, Joyce Bukavec, is working very diligently with teams in K through eight to modify assessments to say, we don't need to spend time on this, focus your attention here, let's get students back up to speed. Here's how to practice using Study Island or our Exact Path, or even some things within our Math Expressions Program, which is our K through five program. And we are going to continue to provide tutorial supports. We know we have a plan to secure additional tutors. We will use those ESER funds to provide that support to students. And then we know that there's also a need and an opportunity to do some root cause math analysis to determine a long-term plan that will address student learning needs in the area of mathematics.
So this concludes our presentation. Thank you for allowing us to present this evening, and we will open it up for questions.
Well, thank you very much to the whole team. This represents an enormous amount of work. But I think it's extremely important that we look at these numbers closely in order to come up with specific areas that we want to address and and what certainly these the what this presentation shows up very clearly is where our first priorities need to be. And obviously, attendance matters because if you're not in school, how are you going to learn what's being taught in school? But we have very significant discrepancies between our students with disabilities and our students without, and you know, that jumps out on each page as being an area that needs to be addressed. So that's good, because if we don't see the numbers, we don't necessarily focus our attention in the right places. So thank you. I'm sure everybody else has thoughts.
I have a few. Going, you know, starting with the attendance. I guess I'm trying to figure out what is normal, with sort of, and I'm going to ask that also with the MAP. When you look at some of these attendance rates, I'm glad Dan asked his question, and we got the answer where it's, you know, two percent of scheduled time marks you as chronic. I mean, are we able to benchmark and compare ourselves on the districts when it comes to attendance? I'm I'm trying to get a sense, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get a sense is, no, is it bad? Is it is it normal?
Understood. So, yes, because of a report that O D E, they put out one at the start of this school year in last year, it's their Data Insights Report. They did give us some information about the public districts in the state of Ohio and their chronic absenteeism rates. I did take a look at the first ring school districts, so these are the sixteen districts, including Cleveland, right, so they're around the suburbs surrounding the city of Cleveland. And all but one of the districts has seen an increase in the percentage of students who are chronically absent. The one district that did not was Irving Park, and their chronic absenteeism rate made the same. But when we think about, like, the five consortium districts that are in the career tech partnership of those districts, ours, looking at, this is based on last year's data, and this is published from the Department of Ed. We are pretty close to those other districts, right? So we do have access to other information, other districts' information, and I can form a collection.
So likewise, when it comes to MAP and trying to figure out what is normal, and and I just wanted to, like, lay out one thing that is, I mean, I understand that, I understand why you use this assessment. What I'm really worried about is the community is going to see, oh, my God, they're only getting fifty percent, or they're only getting a fifty out of a hundred, but fifty is normal.
Right. Right.
So you I think you really need to look at how that, you know, how the whole assessment works. But can you can you help a- at least be better understand what is normal? Um is this just Ohio? Is this nationally? Is this, and then I'm going to drill down into the priority groups in a sec, but can you comment on that?
Certainly. So NWA MAP and the broadcast are not state mandated. So there isn't the information sharing while while several districts in the state and of course across the um across the nation use MAP. There isn't a centralized database or a sharing mechanism um for districts to share their information like we like we have with the um state test scores. Again, because it's not required, districts can choose uh what they want to use to to benchmark um performance over time. So we don't have access to other like specific districts' performance, but that's why it's critical uh that MAP is normed and it's nationally normed. So that would include students in the state of Ohio that are taking it, but it would also include other students across um the nation. So that does help us put our results into context. Um but again, it's how the information here is being communicated. When we think about the percentile, right, the the way that the norming works, a a grade level where students whose performance is at the or rank as the at the fifty percentile is identified as being typical or expected. Anything of of above that again would be a a bonus. Um whereas we use those seven descriptors, slightly above, moderately above, or substantially above typical or average performance, or in the reverse to be slightly below, moderately below, or substantially below. So while we don't have, we can't do a specific, I can't say how students in Garfield Heights or Maple Heights have performed on the MAP test like I could for the Ohio State Test. That norming allows us to make some comparisons to other students um who have to.
So to dig a little bit deeper, um I'm on slide twenty-eight, um priority group. Um basically, the middle grades, um six to eight, and I'm I'm looking at the numbers from our uh black students. So this is not a comparative amongst just all black students, but it is it's a comparative of the black students with with everybody else. Ju- just like with with the students with disabilities, we're not actually looking at how we're performing with just other like students with disabilities. It's we're looking at this as a whole with other in comparison to, you know, our white students, our Asian students, our Hispanic and our black students. I mean, i- I I guess what I'm, I I guess what I'm saying is there a way that we can compare ourselves just with the students with disabilities with just students with disabilities, just to see how well we're doing in that particular area? Because this seems like it's we're we're comparing them against our white, multiracial, black students. And these are students that are probably most at risk and they they are going to perform low, but
So the answer to your question is that there aren't different norms for students based on their their um based on specific priority groups. So yes, when we consider the the norming features or functions, we don't have a separate set of norms for students with disabilities or a separate set of norms for black students to be able to make those priority group comparisons.
I see. Okay. That that's that's helpful to know.
I think that national norming makes the growth component all the more important for us. Because if you have a student who is beginning at a low performance, you can't change that, but you can affect how much they improve over time. And that's our goal, right, is to be able to improve everybody's performance over time. I mean, statistically, you're going to have some students who are starting in a higher place and some students who are starting in a lower place just because that's a the distribution of humanity, right? I don't know that philosophically it's possible to then get everybody up to the same level. What we want is to get everybody to grow as much as they are capable of. It's a little iffy, I know. Kind of, because you don't want to build in limitations to a student's potential.
It is one of the features where our staff appreciates about MAP that we can see that she really had quite a number. We can also find out the impact of the administration, how much people have moved to them to their point. I think this is where they started and the amount of growth that we've seen from the quality administration to the winter administration is, again, it exceeds what's typical or it's below what's typical. So having both measures does allow them um to to see gains or see areas where we may have missed the mark. But again, that's why this has to be so important, to look at both growth and achievement.
Allison, I know this is a question that um you might not be expecting, and I'm sorry if I put you on the spot here, but um how is our um mobility or transancy of our students um play into this data? And have we seen increase uh an increase, a decrease, or is our um mobi- mobility transancy, is that number holding relatively steady? So how often a student moves in and out of our district?
So that 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 measure is included in looking at this here. So district attendance rates will look at students who um are in enrolled um and their their scheduled time. So if they move from Noble to, let's say, Oxford, then that their their rates would still be calculated, it would just that individual moves, if it moved from one building to another building. Um when we think about kind of that same thing for chronic absenteeism, if a student moves out of the district, you know, they were they were here for fifty days, moved out of the district for twenty days, moved back in, um that would impact chronic absenteeism, but just for the time that they are with us. So the the at least the attendance measures that we have don't give us any idea about um transancy from inside of the district to outside of the district. When we think about the uh achievement measures and uh looking at MAP, um we do see a difference in the number of students who have an achievement uh score for fall for the fall administration and the winter administration. I mean, I I neglected to say this, when we're looking at growth, of course, we're only able to determine growth for students that have both of those data points. So we do see some shifting, or we do see some changing in the numbers for those students where we don't have both data points. So, you know, we're we we can assume either that we um do that do the absences or or whatever reason the staff members weren't able to assess them, or they weren't enrolled at at the period of time for one of those tests. But a specific um, you know, transient population um measure, I I do not have.
Okay. I I mean, I and I know that that's a number that's, you know, I know we have it, you might not have it right at your fingertips about what, you know, our transancy number is. I kind of want to know, um and I don't need to know it tonight, but at some point, like, do we know if that's typical? Um, you know, are we higher than average in transancy than other inner-ring districts? And then um the other number I believe you shared was that our um students with disability is eighteen percent. Is that higher than most other districts? And what is a typical number? Um I I and I've heard that it's higher, but I would like to know kind of where we are um in relative to other districts.
It the the rule of thumb is that it's around thirteen or fourteen percent.
Right. That's what I remember reading, that in Ohio, the average is fourteen percent.
But what about the other inner-ring districts? And I'm just curious that, you know, comparing kind of, you know, apples to apples kind of, or who we we are most typical like. I mean, I can tell you, I grew up in rural Ohio and pretty much everybody I started kindergarten with, I graduated with. We didn't have a lot of transancy. And I know we had much lower levels of students with disability, but, you know, back then, there weren't as many ways to identify students either. So I'm I'm just curious where we fall in relation to other inner-ring schools.
We're on the higher end for sure.
W- we're on the higher end, I think, partially because our s- our um district is so affected by uh students who and families who use private schools. Um and private schools, as we know, don't always accept students with disabilities. Um or the the students sometimes have to sign off on their their plans in order to attend and and enroll under a different sort of plan.
Yeah, Dan, I'm aware of that. I want the number from Allison and she can get it to me later. I mean, I'm not asking for it tonight. I'm just saying that's something I would like to know because I'm curious. I mean, I I understand the reasons why and I understand we're higher, but I'm trying to get a measure of, you know, are we eighteen and other inner-ring districts are seventeen, so we're really only one percent higher? Or are we are other inner-rings typical and they're fourteen and we're eighteen?
We'll get that data.
All right. Thank you.
If nobody's going to jump in, I have another question regarding CTE. I'm on actually slide number twelve. And this may be a question that, Liz, you may have to get back to us on. But when I see the high CTE chronic absentee rate, I was under the impression that so absenteeism uh or attendance is actually a criteria to get into some of our CTE programs.
Right.
And so it would seem to me that if that's really happening, why is the, why is there such a high chronic absentee rate with that? Now, I know that there is some, um, I don't know what word to use, but we have five districts trying to bus kids in to different classes with different schedules. And I think it would be pretty easy just because vacations don't align, days off don't align. It might be, I mean, maybe this number is just just because there's hard to get kids into the class just because of all the transportation issues and all the scheduling issues. So I'd really like to try to figure out is is this really, I mean, how alarming is that number?
I actually think this slide really speaks to um, you know, a lot of the the pandemic stuff is driving all these data. Um and I think if you see across demographic groups, even like traditionally um higher-performing groups like that math class, you see those graphs, right? And um a lot of that, when we look at this year, we had so much in and out of students and staff. Actually, when the students, I'm going to get to the CTE question in a second. Um when the students tested for winter MAP, that was Omicron surge.
So that was just before winter break or just after?
So there's like a a window that happened right after break. So we had people who were sick or coming off of sick or who were afraid to come to school or who were distracted from that or with staff. So, you know, there's a bunch of factors kind of happening. You're correct. Our CTE students typically have stronger attendance and yet they also had, so now we have five different districts struggling with Omicron surge, in and out, transportation challenges, teachers in and out. So like this is a really good example of um the struggle to kind of get back to normalcy and then kind of dealing with kind of the delayed factors from um all the the pandemic challenges. Um because this is not typically what we would see with CTE. Now, I will tell you that the the five districts um and the superintendents have recently met to look at our calendars, to look at some things we want to have in place for next year so we can be more aligned. Um I think we all are have the same spring break for next year, which is going to help a lot. Um but we put some dates on the calendar to um to assist um in making sure we have time for professional development across the consortiums. We've even started some very preliminary discussions kind of based on some of the best practices we saw at sixth district compact of looking to see if there's some students, could we roll enrollment in the program across the five schools? If students are able to take some of their core classes um that they may need at a homeschool. So we just started kind of tinkering with that and discussing that. I don't know if that's something for next year, but a kind of like better op- operationalizing CTE, knowing that there are, you know, a bunch of challenges behind this.
Cool. Good.
And if I may clarify, who's that? That is CTE values that we're seeing are just of those students from the other districts who are participating in our CTE courses and courses. So it was not a business of all of the, I mean, I mean, for us, CTE students. Those students would be incorporated into our cohort numbers. This is just those students from the other districts who are flagged. And then I type in on the course and the technology acting with the different calendars and conditions of transportation and that.
So a couple of takeaways that I'm seeing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Allison, but uh and Liz also, but it looks like, you know, we're still seeing impacts of the pandemic in achievement. Um we're seeing some bright spots in growth, but the fact that they, you know, our the achievement was down to begin with because of the impacts, that that's going to still be a hurdle to overcome. Our achievement gap has gotten a little worse. It it's really heartbreaking for me to see some of the gains that we had been getting prior to the achievement. Um I I hate to say wiped out, but that's what it looks like to me. Um that some of those things we worked really, really hard for, we're now starting back where we were and have to rebuild that. Particularly when it comes to achievement gap issues. And uh and and when I say achievement gap, I don't just mean um racial achievement gap, but also students with disability achievement gap. And it um tells me that we still need to work really hard on things like having a summer camp and having tutoring programs and making sure that we're paying attention to the kids that are um in those gaps and how we help them achieve. I mean, it's just, it's this data, I appreciate looking at it this way, but it is really, really heartbreaking to me. And I know we're not alone. I know that, you know, other districts are seeing this. I mean, this is a national thing. It's probably international also to some degree, but it's just, it's sad. And when you look at historically what happened in the pandemic of nineteen eighteen, nineteen nineteen, um this happened then too. I mean, I remember reading that there were, you know, millions of kids who just kind of disappeared. They they didn't graduate. And, you know, the earnings, the earnings of the kids who just kind of were lost in that pandemic were way lower if you read historical things about the impacts of a pandemic and what it does. And it's just, it it's sad to see that with all the technology and the fact that, you know, we still tried to do school remote, you know, where in nineteen eighteen, kids just didn't go to school because that that option wasn't there. But some of the impacts are still the same. It's really sad.
I was struck by similar thoughts, just, you know, that there's discussion about, you know, this, the impact of of COVID being perhaps, you know, we don't even know. The truth is, we don't know what the impacts of of COVID are. We're we're still in the top couple layers of of this onion. But there's discussion, you know, that this is like war years or the depression, where there's just a ton of displaced people. And, you know, I I the 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 difficulty that this brings, I mean, you know, pretty much with, when, you know, once, once a student has has COVID, they're out for ten days. They're pretty much on this list. So, you know, we can sort of think that every student who's had COVID is is more or less present on this list. You know, and and then you think about the implications of those absences on learning. I mean, I think about learning things like math. You know, where you're losing a chunk of consec- You know, where you're losing a chunk of consecutive days of instruction in math.
And not just the student. I mean, if, if a teacher's out.
Yes.
How that impacts the, you know, the next 10 days of the class.
Right.
I mean, as much as our staff and our subs do their best, we know that it's not the same as having your teacher there.
It's not the same, yeah. And then, and then trying to meet that student's needs, the individual student's needs, and having to keep up with, with all of these different students and where they've, where they've been and what they've missed. And then, you know, you also tie into this, this place where you have kids just sort of throwing their hands up in the air and giving up. You know, which is something that we're, we're seeing. You know, when you lose a number of days of instruction and you come back and you're like, what's going on?
Right.
And so, we begin to enter into the sphere of social emotional. And, and the snowball effect of all of this, where kids just feel that it's sort of hopeless. And so, you know, I really think that these, that approaching this attendance as a social work need is a really important thing for us to continue doing. And I agree with Jody that the Tiger Camp over the summer is, you know, is, is an important piece of this as well. And, you know, you just, you, you just have, there's so many, as I said, so many layers that it is, it's just an incredible moment that we are trying to do this in. And, you know, God willing, we'll be, you know, things will, will continue to get better for us.
Well, and I think about, I think it was the number that Felicia gave us last year about the number of homeless students we had. And that number went up over 200 during the pandemic. And you know, that has a huge impact on those children's learning. It just, if you don't even know where you're living, how can you be focused on school?
Yeah.
So I kind of looked at all our math scores and how, when compared to literacy, they're, they're much lower. And math is something that builds. So, when you're taking a geometry class, or algebra, or simple math, it just builds throughout the year. So I really get the fact that if you don't focus on getting the student in the chair and not absent, it, it's going to kill you if they're not there. It's going to kill the scores. And I, and I think we're, we're seeing that. But the numbers are so low, and even with the students with disabilities, it almost seems like it's a board, I mean, we need confirmation is, are we doing enough to tackle this? I mean, is there a way that we can do a deeper dive to get a better sense? And maybe this is something more appropriate when we do our building walk-throughs. So I'll leave it to Malia and Liz to best help us figure this out. But I would definitely like a deeper dive at really what we're doing when it comes to math, and trying to improve these numbers, and what we're dealing with. I mean, you know, COVID is a great excuse for non-performance right now. And it's legit. But are there other issues? Are there other things that we as a board can tackle? I mean, can we divert funding? And I know we, we trust this, these kinds of decisions with our superintendent. But, you know, I think we owe it to the community to just better understand why the numbers are so low. And, you know, for me, it's the students with disabilities, and it's the math. So I'd love a deeper dive at some point, maybe a work session, maybe a retreat. But I think that's something that we need to look at.
And I think part of that is, I mean, I can't imagine trying to learn math remote, which is what we were trying to do. You know, and I can't imagine trying to teach math remote. I mean, so much of that is being able to tell whether or not your students are getting it, and if they're not, being able to explain it in a different way. And if you don't have that in the classroom visual cue, and, and we all know that, you know, learning remote, it was hard to stay focused. And I could see where kids would zone out and miss something. And you're right, Jim, it builds and it builds and it builds. And if you're missing pieces of it as it's building, you're getting left behind.
Yeah, and the flip side to that, of course, is that there are many different ways to learn to read. If you're not in class, for example, because you're homesick, you can still pick up a book, or a magazine, or, you know, or read your Twitter feed, but it's still reading, right? And so then you're, without knowing it, you can still develop vocabulary and learn the grammar from what you see written already. Whereas math is much harder to do on your own.
It's also much harder to be a parent and help your kid with math because for so many of us, it's been so long. It's, it's more intuitive to help your child, it seems to me, or at least in my experience, to help my child with, with reading and that, that sort of work than it is for math. And, you know, and to me, the, the great tragedy is that, you know, we, we may have kids who are convincing themselves that they can't do math when they can.
Well, and you think about being locked up when, when the lockdowns were going on, that's less opportunity to practice math. I mean, you practice math in everyday ways. When you leave your house and you buy something, or you, you know, engage in some kind of transaction that involves numbers. And when you're sitting at home because you're locked down, you're not doing nearly as much of that. I mean, even count on games and things like that, you're probably not doing as much of it.
Well, I guess, unless you were engaged in all of the very fashionable baking projects, then you could work on translating all of your recipes from metric to imperial or vice versa. But probably not what happened in most kitchens.
Yeah, I would just note to connect to this conversation, we will be engaging a committee to do a pause analysis just of our, of math achievement. So we can look at, you know, the math is one assessment, but we also have unit assessments, we also have grades, we also have the goals that the schools have as well. Supplementing that with visits, feedback from teachers in particular, or their experience. I mean, I can tell you the classes that I observed this year, teachers are working very hard, and kids are very focused. But I'm sensitive to the fact that, you know, in many instances, there are students who are, you know, they're catching up for a year and a half.
Right.
In terms of the math pieces. That doesn't mean we haven't had math challenges before. But, but we've lost some time with kids with math. And we're seeing it no matter how high performing they were before the pandemic. So we, I think that will go nicely, either kind of a board focus, you know, maybe board walkthrough focus with the, with the committee that's also looking at that to, you know, develop some recommendations over, because this is going to be something we'll be working on over time, some recommendations over time. So we can look at our resources, and we can look at our schedules, we can look at our professional development, we can look at our interventions, we can look at, you know, you know, multiple things to see where do we have success? Where can we replicate success? You know, what are best practices out there? And, you know, where do we want to make some, some changes?
Beverly, we haven't heard from you yet. Do you have any thoughts to add?
No, I just, I mean, I just noticed that, you know, there were some changes. I just keep looking back at how challenging it was when our kids were in remote learning. And I do see that there are some slight changes when they were, when they returned back in class. And, and, you know, it is a little discouraging, but we have to just continue to work at improving, you know, our achievement gap. Work at it, continue to encourage and improve our, our, encourage our students and teachers. You know, and we just have to keep working at this. You know, it's, it's not, you know, you can look at it and say, oh my God, look at this, this is, this is not good. But we do have to look back at what we, since we've been in this pandemic, as Dan said, what the effect this had on what, not only our students, but on all of us, you know, and our staff as well. So, we just have to just continue to hope and work at it and just believe, you know, we're going to, it's going to happen. We're going to come out of this, and it's, it's going to improve.
Yeah, well, the damage done won't be undone in one year. It's obvious that we need to make this a long-term effort. And we have to do it, obviously, across the board for all ages. And there will, there will be, as you alluded to, Jody, students who, you know, who age out, who graduate and, and won't necessarily have been able to make up for the past two years. But, again, we have to work on this in a very concerted way and with a long-term framework, because it's going to take a while, no question.
Yeah, I can't help but think that, you know, a lot of times, I know when a kid doesn't get something in math, I, I've seen when I've been in the buildings that, you know, our kids will stop by after school and just say, hey, I didn't get this, can you go over it with us? And our, our teachers are great about doing that. And I think in remote, that just didn't happen because kids didn't have that opportunity. You know, then you had to reach out and you had to make an appointment. And I've often seen, I can give an example of, you know, Monticello, where I've seen the math teachers, you know, somebody will be staying after explaining something to a kid, and then another kid will walk by and go, wait, I didn't get that either, can I come in? And next thing you know, there's six or seven kids in there getting a little quick, you know, you know.
A reteach.
A reteach over it. And then they go, oh, now I get it. Because sometimes with math, you need to see it more than once to get it. I mean, I know I do. And I just think that those were, those are the opportunities that were lost that might not have been apparent during the, you know, the time of remote learning and, you know, during COVID. And that's the kind of stuff that, you know, that makes the difference. Those are the things that make the changes and help kids succeed that are, you know, they're, I don't want to say invisible, but they're the things that you don't think about, that really, really make a difference over time.
Well, that's why the success coaches and the tutoring programs are going to be so incredibly important, because that's what gets us out of this. Well, thank you, everybody. I know it's a little disheartening. But, again, we have to look at these things in the face in order to be able to address them. And if there isn't anybody else with something to say, I will consider a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I just want to thank the team for putting this together for us.
Could you speak closer to your mic, please?
I just want to thank the team for putting this together for us.
Thank you. At the risk of interrupting the meeting, I do have one thing that I'd like to say. Because I don't have this opportunity very often, I need to give a huge thank you to all of our staff at the building in Noble, especially our classroom teachers and our faculty specialists, who worked their tails off, holding the notes in person. We're not pleased with the results that we see here. We know that we have much more than we just have in front of us. But we're not pleased with the results, as an example. That we just have our day today, and our staff is looking at these, looking at this data, preparing, and if you're lucky enough, pushing, reaching out to go along with it. So, these are not sad moments, and we're not in a waning mood. Time. My colleagues from the district level and the school level are doing anything and everything that they can to make sure that the numbers that we see represent the kids and the families that we serve. And then we also have to keep in mind that every decision we make impacts our instruction. So when we stop to give the map test, that is time away from instruction. When we stop to review and analyze, that's time away from instruction. But we know it's important. So again, thank you to our, our teachers and our support staff and our administrators, who are there and at work every day, working outside of their day and on the weekends. I'm certain that we will see a change, and I just need to say thank you to them.
Well said, agree.
Yeah, thanks, Allison, for making those points, because you're absolutely right.
And with that, I'll motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Gaynor.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes. Thank you, and good night.